Okay, welcome everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to East Dundee's regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, July 17th, 2023. I have six o'clock. Franco will take the order.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Kuntzey?
Present.
Britton?
Here.
Saviano?
Here.
Tribert?
Here.
Sauter?
Here.
And President Line?
Here. Get you all by seat for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And that'll take us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board either on a agenda or non-agenda item?
I would.
The floor's yours.
Good evening all. My name is Pete Perrison, and I own the building at 7, 9, and 11 Jackson Street. So, in the old, in the old days, we used to call it the Bike Shop Building, because for decades it always had a bike shop in it. And now, because of recent activities, number one, he's not there anymore, and number two, now I have a mural on the side of my building. So, now, we're gonna be hopefully known as the Mural Building, or the Building with the Mural. So, we're excited for that. You know, about seven years ago, I was sitting across the street having lunch, and I just saw, looked at the side of my building. At that time, we still had landscaping, we had windows, we had air conditioners. And, and I always thought something would be cool on the side of the building. And I thought signage for my tenants, and I thought, wow, that's not really what I was feeling or looking for either. And then, lo and behold, about a year and a half ago, I talked to Jeff, and then, from then, this Art Council kinda happened to be created about that same time or so, I imagine, I heard. And for this to, to take it from that point to where we're at today with the mural being done, I'm, I'm, it's way above my expectations. Working with the Art Council was great, working with Brandis at Villachaw was great. And just working through the whole collaboration of the RFP and the selection of the ultimate artist, and her drawings, and everyone's feedback, and it was just, I couldn't be more excited about it. I'm still excited about it. I just, just driving here, there were four or five people just standing there looking at it. And I think we're gonna see a lot of that coming up. And I just want to express my gratitude to whoever created the Art Council and given them a couple bucks to do some fun with, which, you know, somewhere along the line is a little bit maybe of everybody, you guys especially. And I just wanna, for the record, just thank everybody. And I was glad that I could be part of the first one, or at least the first big one, and hope that it continues, continues through. I own other buildings and other municipalities, and this was one of the smoothest collaborative efforts I've ever had with the village. And I think there's a lot to say for you guys, and for you guys and for the village at Hall. And I just, I just wanted to publicly thank everybody involved, and it's really just exceeded my expectations. There's a little bit more work we have to do. I'm gonna do some landscaping, some just real low, you know, grasses or something, maybe to kinda mimic the bottom of the Fox River or something, and maybe create a border just to kinda keep people away. I'm hoping, you know, not too many people are gonna wanna go up and touch it, but so there's a little bit of landscaping left, but the hard work's done. And I think it's just from now here on out, we can just now sit back and enjoy it.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for everything that was done, and especially the Art Council.
We'd really like to actually express thanks to you as well. You've been enormously accommodating with, like you say, moving the landscaping, moving the air conditioners, boarding up the window and stuff for the first one.
Yep.
And, I mean, you went really over and above, and really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Once I started getting involved with the Arts Council, I said, this, this is gonna work. This is really gonna work. And I think we had a home run with that first one.
Turned out really good.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, was there anybody else? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to ask one question.
Sure.
The road work, is there any set date that that's gonna be done on Water Street?
On Water. The man right there is the one I asked.
The contractor has their, to develop a road restoration plan, and that should be starting in the beginning.
Okay.
So, it should take about a week, week and a half.
Yeah.
I mean, since the last time we were in here, they worked one day.
Yeah.
It's three and a half weeks they worked one day on that road. It's a little, it's, I guess, I voiced it last time, but it's just a little out of hand.
Inconvenient, yeah.
And I don't understand why everybody's not put broad, one day in, three and a half weeks they've worked there.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know who you hired, but it's just like, it's not a, not a good hire. Not good for this.
We'll keep that in mind for the future. We appreciate your patience on it, Gar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none. Okay, we'll go to consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Can I make a request to pull two items out of the consent agenda, please?
Certainly.
Items E and F.
E and F, okay. Was it A or B?
E, E as in elephant.
Oh, E and F, okay.
Second.
I will make a motion to approve regular village board meeting minutes stated May 15th, 2023, and June 26th, 2023. Also move to accept the warrants list in the amount of $220,303.96 and $137,895.76. Also move to approve an ordinance approving the plat of easement release and plat of easement grant. Also move to approve the purchase of a 2024 Genie articulated boom lift, model Z45XC from Altofer Cat, in the amount of $81,242. And lastly, I will move to approve and authorize the release of a letter of credit for PAL land at 250 Patricia in East Dundee, Illinois, in the amount of $35,608.8 for the Wind Trust Bank for water main improvements at that location.
Second.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribert?
Yes.
And Sauter?
Yes.
Okay, so items E and F.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Village Code Section 30.09, Standing Committees, and Section 30.18 Committee of the Hall consolidating the Village of East Dundee's Standing Committees.
Okay, can I ask why we wanted them?
Second. I have some questions about what was in here. So, we can just discuss it really quickly, so.
You're up.
The language in B, so in the summary, we go, let's see what page, I don't know what page we're on, I'm sorry. In the summary, I'm, item B, in the, in the actual wording, except the Committee of the Hall each standing committee shall, that, that language, it still has an item about the first regular meeting in June of each year. I think that that was not updated with the new fiscal year. Because everything else in there is about appointments at the beginning of each fiscal year. And that used to be earlier, so June would make sense. I don't think that June makes sense in that language anymore. So, I was just, that was the only comment about that probably needs to be updated.
Or potentially because of election years and new, new boards being seated?
Then maybe we don't wanna have it on the fiscal year. Because the language is fiscal year, but no later than the first regular meeting in June, so I would assume that that was tied to the old fiscal year.
Right.
So, either we tie it to the fiscal year, or we tie it to elections.
I see what you're saying. This is the president shall assign trustees to each committee each fiscal year, but no later than the first regular meeting in June.
Correct.
So, the, because the fiscal year is now January.
Right.
It would just be the calendar year. So, if you wanted to amend this to say calendar year, you could, or you could just say each year, but no later than the first regular meeting in June.
And that's fine with me. We can just say each year, we can strike fiscal. So, we can say each year and then tie it to June.
Well, if it was based on the election, which is in April, and that's when the old fiscal year was, if I'm correct, May 1st. May 1st, and we were giving them two months, would it stand to reason to move that June forward as well, or no?
You mean push it to July?
No, I mean, if we're saying now that, are we just gonna keep it as, we're gonna change the, the year to the calendar year, and keep the June as the deadline?
I think that makes, I think that makes sense, based on election seats.
Oh, that's true.
You can't say with the exception of, of an election year, whereas if, if, if it's an election year, that it can be June otherwise.
Because you won't be appointing in January during an election year.
Right. So, I, you know.
So, that's fine.
Yeah, I almost think just, you can leave it as a calendar year and just do it annually by June.
Okay.
Right? Does that make sense? Okay.
Yep.
So, we'll just strike fiscal each year, but no later than the first regular meeting in June? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Because that gives you a couple weeks, if there were to be a change. That gives you a couple weeks to make the change.
Yep. That's all I had. It was, that was just literally it. Okay.
What about F?
Well, we'll, we'll make the motion on that, and then.
Okay. Thought we could do it together. Okay, the motion was already.
So, we can call a question? Is that what we're trying to do? Yep.
You might need to amend the motion.
Oh, amend.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay, I did that, didn't I?
You made the first motion, yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the Village Code as stated with the exception of removing fiscal year in item B, Section 30.9 Standing Committees, and Section 30.18 Committee of the Hall, consolidating the Village of East Dundee's Standing Committees.
Second.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribert?
Yes.
And Sauter?
Yes.
Okay, item F?
I will move to approve an ordinance amending Village Code Section 93.11 Noise to keep the prohibited noise times and dates consistent within the section and to match village practices.
Second.
So, we're adding the language to make, to include the special use permits that we've created, essentially.
No, we're just making the language consistent, because in two different sections of our code, one had the noise ordinance ending at 11, and one had it ending at midnight.
Right.
So, the problem, so this is consolidating that and saying that if anybody wants to come before the board and request a special event permit and things like that.
I get that. But we're also adding verbiage to include that we've created the special use permit for noise, correct? I mean, I'm reading, or by special use permit ordinance by the Village Board of Trustees, so.
Right, that would, if we wanted to do an exception for the noise, I think. But, my main point with this one, and my main concern, is that we are updating our code in the middle of band season.
That's what I was gonna discuss.
And I do not really wanna see our local establishments getting in trouble or ticketed or fined for noise violations if they've got standing musicians, contracts out with.
Till 11:30 PM.
Right, or something based on, based on the fact that our code was inconsistent.
Right.
So, that's where I just wanted to raise it and discuss that, because, you know, we're kinda changing it in the middle of the summer. So, I'm happy to, I'm happy to have a change. I'm completely happy to have a change. I just don't want it to be something where all of a sudden our venues are having problems because we changed it.
So, one suggestion would be to make this ordinance effective January 1, or something like that.
That would play out the season.
Be great. And then, we would just go forward with the understanding that it's midnight, looking at the chief for a nod. Is that how we would approach this?
They were going to 11, right?
My concern with 11 is that Friday, for Fridays and Saturdays, is that the bars close at 2. A lot of them do. And that's three hours before closing. I think two hours before closing, when I know a lot of bars end their music around 11:30, to be half hour before the ordinance is fair for a Friday and Saturday around here. I, I think for those two, I, I support the midnight. But, I don't, I'm also not a police officer, so I don't know those means, that, those other factors, but that was, that was my thought. It's Friday, Saturday.
Well, why were we changing it from midnight to?
So, we, we can go with midnight or 11. It's up to the board. It's just that we need both sections of the code to be consistent, so that when we go to enforce it, somebody can say, but here it says this, you know, the old mom dad said this, that. So, whatever you guys wanna do, we will do. We just need to know which direction you wanna go, and then, if you did wanna do the 11 instead of the 12, we could make it effective next year. If you did wanna go with the midnight, then I think we would have to come back with a different ordinance, because I think it might be in a different section of the code.
Yes, we'd have to amend the other section of the code.
Yeah, yeah. So, either way.
Which would be difficult to do, like, on the fly.
We would just come back in two weeks with the, with the different ordinance.
Yeah, because we won't put this into effect until January anyway. It's just, you know.
Well, I'm suggesting if you go with 11, we would say January. If we go with midnight, we would do it now, so that everything's consistent. And we would do it in two weeks.
That's, yeah, that makes sense.
Because that wouldn't negatively impact those that already have music contracts.
Very true. Because everybody should have been midnight at the latest, like that's.
So, does the police department wanna advocate for 11, or are you okay either way?
I think it's more, we're more concerned with, with the complaints and the concern that we have with our residents.
Mm-hmm.
I understand these perspectives from the book. I think that's especially Saturday night, which is Sunday morning, might be a challenge to, that we'll still receive complaints, and at which point, the residents still can make a noise complaint, and then they fall under the other ordinance. So, it's, that's why the inconsistency is part of the problem.
Well, I, I just, all I'm thinking of from, from my part is surrounding neighbors. I'm thinking 11 o'clock is, is late enough. I understand. I don't, I mean, as far as contracts, I'm not sure what that, how that plays into it, because the contract to play is gonna be for whatever the ordinance allows.
Which is currently, it is currently for what the ordinance allows. So, if we changed it, and it was effective immediately, it would null, like those contracts.
I realize, I realize. I'm just, my, my point is, though, I, I just, I don't see the need for a change, I guess. Given the, we've had surrounding residents in here before who have all expressed concerns with the noise levels going late into the night. Adding another hour, I don't think it's going to thrill them.
It wasn't adding an hour. It was always midnight. It's keeping it as.
So, we have, we have inconsistent code, and that's the problem. One place says 11, one place says midnight. And so, we're trying to tie that together, and now the question is, do we tie it together by saying 11, or do we tie it together by saying midnight?
I just wanna clarify, as Franco just pointed out to me, which is a very good point, that this doesn't just apply to the downtown area. It's, and live bands that may get a special use permit, it would be village-wide, so, you know, someone outside in a residential neighborhood, you know, so it's not just the downtown area. So, I'm certainly not advocating one way or the other, but I just wanna make sure that's clear that it's the whole village, not like just the downtown business area.
Yeah, we do have a split between Sunday through Thursday versus Saturday, Friday and Saturday. The complaints that I've heard, the neighbors who've thought the bar music is too loud, they didn't mind the weekends. They felt like the school nights were an issue, so what if we go midnight for the weekends, but maybe push on a weeknight, maybe it's 9 o'clock, or something a little bit sooner when kids are already in bed and trying to go to sleep, especially if your neighbor's playing music.
It's 10:30 on the week.
Yeah, pushing it to 9 is my suggestion. For a weeknight, well, a suggestion, where, and then we push the weekend to midnight instead of 11 or 12. Make it 12, we'll push the other one back. Is one idea. And one question is, point A is, we're not allowed to play music out loud in a stereo situation, and then point B is about what hours you should do it. What is particular about A that doesn't restrict B? I might be missing that maybe one is residential, or one's a business area, but it doesn't seem like it.
A says it will use live music without a permit.
Right, and they don't have permits for music yet, the special use permit isn't in process yet. So, I have.
I thought we have given out somebody a special use permit, haven't we, huh? For?
For live entertainment?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Not yet. So, as soon as we pass this, everybody's gonna be forbidden from playing live music without that special use permit.
Sounds like they already are because of this.
So, what does that say?
We have messy laws.
Which I think was a known issue, is that we, it's currently not quite legal to do music, but everyone is, and we're trying to clean it up. But, I was just wondering if we need to change that in the meantime, if we're updating it. Because, yeah, it's still inconsistent saying you can't play music, and then here's the hours that you should.
Or would it change the weekdays have to be done in a separate effort?
It's, it's already listed out there separately.
If we wanted to amend weeknights, we could, but I think the, the question of whether or not this is okay. A is just saying you can't disturb the peace using live music or any other means. So, that's, you know, blanket. We're adding, you know, the special event permit, but it's, it's already, in a sense, in there. It's just specifying it more clearly, so.
Chief. And I think the point with the village attorney is, is that this also means your next door neighbor.
Right.
As a matter of fact, we had a discussion about that, at the staff meetings this morning, about the fact that there is very limited regulation on somebody having a house permit other than the noise ordinance and parking ordinances. And there is no permit required on your own private property at your own home, so that's also, you know, as you're thinking about midnight, you're also thinking about midnight and your next door neighbor between yards with children, you know, it's just midnight can be a challenge every year.
Absolutely. But, of course, the time wouldn't be as big a factor as the noise itself, correct?
True, but I guess it could, it's what's tolerable at a certain time changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
Extremely subjective, which is one of the hardest parts. Exactly.
Exactly.
That's why we have this 75 DVA, and here it's not subjected with this.
Right.
Wow. I guess, since we're talking about putting this on the next meeting agenda, should we just table this for two weeks and think about the time we wanna shut off the noise?
We can do that. We can prepare two separate ordinances, and you guys can get some feedback from your residents and, yeah, business owners, and then, that'd be great. When we have the meeting in two weeks, you can choose which one to adopt.
All right, so do we need a motion to table this?
Make a motion to table.
Yeah, can I also, one other thing to that? I'd like to have an understanding of what, if there's other noise ordinances west of Dundee as well, because I know there are some complaints from across the river.
Flots.
Um, yeah, and, or I've seen, seen that as well. So, if we could have an understanding of what, what West Dundee does, Carpenter's Hill does, you know, the adjacent communities that are also affected, and so that we can have some context about this, and have a little bit, you know, maybe, not, I'm not saying we have to do what they're doing, but just some context.
Helpful, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sounds good. So, do we need a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Franco?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribert?
Yes.
And Sauter?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to other agenda items. Start out with A, makes sense.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the number of Class A liquor licenses for Copacabana.
Second.
I believe the applicant is here. Did you want to share any information about what you're planning?
Hi. So, yeah, basically, you know, we wanna apply for another licensed entertainment license. Our plan is Thursday through Sunday. Currently, we only use our banquet venue on Saturday, so we'd like to, a way to generate more money. We're looking to have a karaoke, you know, small live local bands come in. Currently, we, every event, about 95% of our events have some kind of live music, whether it's three hours, four hours, brought in by the banquet people themselves. So, we're just looking to, you know, kind of get live music on our end, but to be able to bring in the general public. We've, that place had it before in 20, before 2020, 2019, something like that.
They had a Class A liquor license?
I don't, I'm looking at that. I don't think it was Class A. I was gonna Google that real quick. I didn't catch that. I think it was a.
I think it was banquet.
No, we have a banquet one already, but we're looking for entertainment. So, I don't know if that's Class A. But it was, it's an entertainment license to be able to sell outside private events, so, yeah.
So, that would be converting the Class G to a Class A?
No, we would need another liquor license.
Two, so.
Yeah, because we would still continue with the banquet, but during our slow season, which is November through March-ish, when we're not really using the, the facility, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whatever we could, events that we could do, you know, we would like to do that.
Um, so, I have a question for staff. This was the same item that was on the agenda a few weeks ago, no, that we took off?
It was a few months ago, and at the time, there were some zoning issues that have since been rectified.
They have, no?
Correct, we took care of that. It was landscapers that parked in the back. They've since been removed. And a gentleman who had cars parked in front, he's no longer there anymore.
And the other question is, how has the, um, Club Copacabana been doing with noise complaints?
I believe the chief looked that up. Do you wanna speak to that?
Sure.
I had our staff run the statistics over the last couple of years, and I can tell you that for '23, we had seven total calls, zero for noise. '22 was 18 total calls, four for noise. And '21 was 26 total calls, 10 for noise. Now, my staff tells me that this year, they haven't seen the big band events as they might have had before, where the challenges with the bass and so forth. So, and what, and not knowing what their, their business plan had been for this calendar year, but they tell me that the, that the events that they had seen, especially on the weekends in prior years, they really hadn't seen this calendar year as much, so, which wouldn't precipitate the calls. So, that's, because I was also trying to find out if there was any other anecdotal information they could provide me for the board for tonight in regards to that.
So.
So, I can just add to that. You said last year there was four noise. We've been doing the same events since last year. Live music, like I said, 95% of our, of our events include live music, band, 15-person band, three-person band, four-person band. So, it goes to show that this year, we've really, you know, since last year, we've been working to reduce the complaints.
What is it that you've done that's changed? Because, believe it or not, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be combative here or anything, but every time you guys have held an event, we've had a subsequent complaint.
Well, I mean, last year looked pretty good. Yeah, no, we've put panel, soundproofing paneling, we put a wall.
That was done prior to you.
Huh?
That was done prior to you guys.
No, they had it sporadically throughout the building. We have it concentrated over our stage. We have dedicated sound engineers that come in. They're specific to our location. They know our problem. They monitor the base. They monitor the volume. And the same people are coming every weekend, so, you know, it's not like a new person comes in and they don't know our situation. We go outside every event, you know, we make sure the noise doesn't pass a certain, like, the gap gun in the parking lot a little bit. So, we're, we're on top of it. And as you can see, for this year, we're over halfway in, and we have zero complaints.
So, four complaints this last year, yeah, there is a definite improvement. So, four complaints this year, were they all in separate?
No, they were last year.
Last, last year?
Yeah.
So, were they all on separate nights? And also, how, there's four complaints out of how many events have you, would you have done in a calendar year?
So, in a calendar year, I'm gonna say 50-plus events. 50-plus, I mean, usually we have two every weekend during our prime time, which is late May to about October.
Last year was two in July and two in August.
Okay.
And then the other seven calls have been like medical, nothing related to our business, you know. Stuff happening there. Somebody faints, the pinsonera girl didn't eat, her blood sugar, whatever. Yeah, I'm scared to call you guys, but I don't wanna take that one, but, yeah, they've not been us, so, yeah. But we've been working really hard. Right now, we got a quote, how do you say in English, to put like cement blocks, something, all around the building, and that would help with the noise too. The guy just came out yesterday, Saturday.
Okay.
So, we're getting folks to do that as well.
Cement blocks?
Yeah, like.
Blasts? Allards?
Yeah.
How bad?
Obviously, with the permission of the village, but right now, we're getting folks.
I gotta come to the doctor's pack before I'm gonna do something.
Yeah, we're just getting folks to see what can be done, and then we'll come. Yeah, we're just getting folks to see what can be done, um, and then we'll come before you guys to see what, what we can do. It's not gonna be done without a permit, so, yeah, no worries.
Even we're trying to work inside to try to put insulation, check what, uh, whatever we're gonna need to track that to our manager all the noise.
Okay.
And and we work a lot inside, you know, trying to avoid all the noise from outside. And I really, I spent, you know, a lot of money, a lot of money to try to fix our inside with the wave down, you guys would want.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, so the only thing I'm questioning is within this classification of A is the part where, um, it can be packaged sales that can be consumed off present premises where it's sold? Um, beer and wine and the.
So for us, I mean, if you're talking for us, we don't want that. It would be consumed outside and that's it. Like, we don't want anything, we don't wanna sell anything, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so am I reading that correctly?
Don't say that.
Yeah, so is this, isn't this the best licensed type, class type for something that's, everything's gonna be consumed just on premises? And you would be serving wine, beer and hard?
Hard liquor, yeah, mixed drinks, correct. And it would, during event hours or like banquet hours, and that's it, nothing to go, nothing outside the venue, everything's inside. And we have security, every event, they ensure that nobody steps even into the lobby with a mixed drink in their hand.
Okay.
Thus preventing them from going outside of it.
Okay.
Caitlin, do we have another similar class that would not have the off-premise consumption of original packaging? I have to look. Would we have to create that? Code, uh, off the top of my head, I apologize, I'm not sure, no worries.
So this is, I'm not gonna go down that rabbit hole, never mind, I withdraw my question.
Okay.
For substituting that, Caitlin, could we, could there be the potential to approve this license, but say that it precludes the?
You have to put a condition on it that they, um, there could be no sale of, for off-premise consumption.
Yeah.
Be okay with that?
I would just caution the board to tread carefully with regard to finding a compromise between an A license and any other. Um, this, this business has been a problem for East Dundee right from the start.
Oh, it was different owners.
Prior to you coming in as the owner, it was a problem and it hasn't changed. And so what you're asking for is part of this, this request is to allow for essentially a nightclub to open up beyond or apart from the banquet facility. It's a banquet facility, that's what it's been, has a banquet facility and has been wrought with problems. All the surrounding community, the, the, the residential area there that's behind you has had problems with it, big time.
So understandably.
Hold on, and so the idea of turning this thing, this facility into a nightclub as well is just going to compound the problem. So now this board is going to do what this board is going to do, but I would caution you to consider this and, uh, deny this request.
In my opinion, you're mixing two completely different things. It's the same business, but different owners. The prior owner, we had nothing to do with his day-to-day operations, we were not the owners or nothing. So you're putting his bad reputation with us and as you can see, I mean, we've been going down in, in calls, I mean, so you're still mixing us with the other, you know, regard us as the new, new owners.
Perhaps, but by comparison, you still are far and away above the, the rest of the establishments that we have in this town with the number of complaints.
I know. I mean, three other establishments that have more files.
And the seven calls have been medical related, so I mean, again, you're, you're, that bad reputation, you're continuing to smudge on us, we're, you know, we.
I'm encouraged by the mitigating factors you've put in with the building and the number that chief has given us. I'm very encouraged by that and I appreciate your autonomy to the, to the problem. And I do not fault you for other people's issues.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. I mean, we're, we're trying really hard, invested a lot of money.
I can see that. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and the numbers show it and being at zero for the year where we do have other complaints from other establishments, so you guys are doing better, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready to call, call the question that we wanna amend.
Wait a second, wait a second, the discussion's over, Chief would like to address the board.
Oh, sorry.
No, there were just some things I just wanted the board to just take under consideration because it is kind of a change. I won't call it a change of use, cause that's a legal classification, but just that if it is, I guess, from a couple of things from a, from a police perspective, just wanting to maintain safety of, of the, the folks that are coming there too, is, is that this change of use is kind of a little different than you have more of a transient population coming and going, rather than a cohesive group coming to an event and leaving, you know, the event. Consume, you know, presumably know each other at some, you know, at some level. Uh, the other is, is I don't know and I, and I'll apologize if it's taken care of, that'd be great, is, is that, as like in our other, uh, regular Class A establishments on whether or not there's video, uh, which may have not been necessary for a banquet type hall, where at, at our bars, we have video when there are incidents that occur. Uh, traffic a little different because you've got people coming in and out at all times and also I talked to Chris and we didn't get a chance to kind of have a conversation a little more about it, but lighting in the parking lot is basically, it's still the Oldsmobile park, lights in the parking lot. Is that enough for folks that are coming and going, you know, throughout the evening? And then a little bit more traffic with people coming and going throughout the evening rather than coming to an event and leaving an event. So those are just from our perspective, from the police department's perspective and of course, that'll pull somebody from downtown. You know, one thing about all our fine establishments is they're fairly concentrated. So like our staffing, of course, is a little more, uh, centrally located at a certain time of night and this will, this will spread us out a little bit. So just some considerations, we don't have a, I certainly don't, or the police department, they have an opinion on what the, the direction is in the board, but just some things to, to think about in regards to, uh, safety perspective.
Ma'am, would you mind responding to?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so at any time when our hall, is that capacity, we're talking about six hundred people coming and going? And thus far, the past three years, two and a half years, there's never been any congestion of anything. Um, as mentioned, we have security at every event, whether it's a kid's baptism, a birthday party, whatever it is, there is security at every event. We even have security in the parking lot with the, what do you call the little flashing thing going around, making sure there's no underage kids drinking or whatever. Um, the parking lot has lights, I think there's two or three out that we've been emailing, I don't know if Catherine's here. Uh, we've been trying to get them fixed for a couple of years, they're in the front, we have lights all around the back. We don't turn them on during the week because there's no events during the week, so might waste electricity, but when there is events, all the lights in the parking lot go on. And we do have security, there is security, two cameras in each bar, there's, um, two, three cameras in each hall as well, and they record, so if anything happens, we, we have security.
Right, thank you.
Was there anything that she did not cover?
Cameras, because their security is done is great, but we may, the may, the issue may be a liquor violation that we need, the, the evidence.
Yeah, we have working security cameras in the bar, they record, um, every camera records.
And you save those recordings?
Um, they re-recorded themselves for a week, so we get notified right away, we download them, yeah, the DVR records over itself.
Standard, I think.
So, um, yeah, about a week, um, but yeah, if anything happens, uh, you know, we download the image or the video and we save it. We had a workers, not a worker's comp, but an incident, I was able to get the cameras, download the events and it's insurance and that's it.
Would external cameras be necessary, Chief?
I don't think they're, I mean, they'd be certainly helpful, especially, you know, if their customers are there, you know, helpful for us.
Well, I mean, an, an inside camera is going to record an incident only to a certain extent. So if someone were to leave with an open container, you're not gonna capture them walking through the door out to the outside.
Well, again, we have security at each hall entrance, nobody can even go into the lobby with a drink. I mean, these security, if you try to slip a beer in your pocket, they're catching you, nobody walks out with a drink. If you find a beer can outside, it's cause they probably had it in the car before they got there and, you know, pre, what do you call it, tail games or whatever they call it, um, yeah, but it's not coming off from our building. We have security at least three in the lobby when the event ends to ensure that no drinks are taken outside.
Chris.
Our underage people get a wrist, uh, over twenty-one gets a wristband, the bartenders do not serve any drinks, anybody who does not have a wristband. If they come to the bar, I don't care if you look eighty, you have to go to security, present your ID and then get a wristband, yeah.
Chris, did you have a chance to see the lighting or were you brought into the loop on this? Are you, do you think it's satisfactory?
We talked about it briefly this morning.
Yeah.
They, uh, they do have lighting there, the original, uh, light bulbs, um, that would be something that would be, uh, more of an engineering review.
Okay.
If we, if we were like on a normal new building, if they provided a total metric plan, make sure the lighting's covering everything they need to cover. But we don't, in this case, we don't have that, I mean, the technically, I mean, there's maybe more people going, not more people, but more frequent, uh, visits in and out, depending on the venue, um, but if somebody's coming there for a Catholic, what do you do for the rolls? Per- periodically kind of we get some and then people all leave at the same time, sooner to a banquet.
Sure, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know this right off, um, the top of my head, but there is some parking in the front, but most people park in the back?
Yeah, so there's some parking in the front and it goes on the side and then it goes over on the back.
Right, yeah, okay. Um, and the, the parking study was done, I mean, the light study was done for the back, so we know that it's not an issue for the neighbors and.
I don't know that any, like, you study was done.
Okay, it was just.
I think it's still the original bulbs from the car.
Hmm, that makes sense.
Which would have made sense to see that lighting at a minimum would be taken care of prior to the issuance of the license? I mean, it seems to me it would make sense, rather than issue the license and then on the off chance that the lighting gets changed. You mentioned that you've been looking to fix that lighting for the last year and a half.
No, we weren't looking to fix it, the village was gonna fix it because it's on city property and it's been about two years. Um, I don't know, I haven't even known Catherine.
It's on city property?
Yeah, the city, Catherine had told me that it was the city's responsibility and she would look into it.
Makes sense to you, Chris?
It's right on the wrong side of Route twenty-five.
I believe she was talking to Phil, we discussed that also today, that, uh, Phil asked me to look at it and the, the two lights that they're talking about are on utility bulbs and they are wired to ComEd directly, so I think they would be, uh, they wouldn't be village lights, but they might be ComEd lights that aren't functioning.
That's not us.
That's one's adjacent to each entrance and we determine that we, as the village, the lights providing the benefit to any of our village goes or are brought from five to, okay. So they only illuminate the entrance to, to the property itself, therefore, in fact, I left a message for, for someone this morning to kind of follow up our conversation this morning, that those two light fixtures would be the responsibility of the property owner to, to replace the bulbs or.
Well, they would be anywhere else, if there are light fixtures that are owned by a utility, then
Correct, if they're owned by.
The property owner wouldn't have necessarily either access or authorization to, to make any sort of changes like that. So if one of those lights goes down, now we're dealing with a third party. It would seem to me that prudent thing would be control and ownership of the light fixtures that illuminate the parking lot. You know, I mean, I don't wanna have to rely on ComEd, that's gonna be like, you know, pulling teeth, getting a hold of them.
So again, that was me, Elon and Catherine, I, did you call somebody today?
Steve?
Yes.
I talked to Phil and Phil reminded, oh, I'm sorry, he went over there and he mentioned me, said he's gonna take care of it. This is like, uh, this is the, the two main answers, those are regular, uh, halls, this guy, the lamp, and they have been, I don't know, around for three, four, five years and nobody's saying anything. Even from the beginning, when, when I take, uh, I take over the building, uh, we mentioned somebody and they said they want to take care of it, okay? After a couple of months later, I came back and I talked to, uh, somebody downstairs and they said they do the, uh, Phil, he went over there and I, I don't know if this is gonna be part of the town or the competition or maybe this part of village or it's gonna be part, uh, part of, that's gonna be from us to fix it up, I don't know.
Right, well, but we do need to know, I guess is my point, so.
So we didn't know what to consider, so we're waiting.
What's been done in the past is the past, what we have to do is focus on where we are right now and where we need to be.
Correct, but we couldn't move forward because we're under the standing of the village, now we're hearing ComEd, so we don't know which way to go, who to touch it. If we're allowed to touch it, then we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
One suggestion would be, I mean, the, the lights on a ComEd pole are an anomaly, that's, it's strange. Uh, you know, we can work with ComEd to have them removed, I don't, because we don't feel they serve a, a purpose for the public. Um, and then if, if there is a desire to move forward with this, this license, we can make a conditional on the building inspector doing an, an inspection of the lights to determine if they're adequate or not, the existing lights, and if they're not, then, you know, they can add additional, excuse me, lights to make it adequate. So that is an option.
That works.
I wonder if, uh, we would be able to, I mean, all, all businesses have to renew their liquor license every year, but their automatic approval normally, is there a way to say for one year, they have to come back and come before the board again for their next year renewal for their liquor license?
Well, they fill out the applications.
I have the sunsets, can I ask them?
Uh, yeah, you could put that condition in, granted or.
We could, like, the sunset eventually, I mean, they already have the sunset, so I don't know, but like.
I'm just making sure there's nothing yet. I mean, you can also, if they're violating anything, licenses can always be revoked and suspended, um, once the license has been granted, it just is more to create something where you're taking it away from them without, um, a reason, just.
Okay.
If there is a reason, of course, you can go through those processes, but the code provides kind of the framework of how a suspension or revocation would have to play out.
Well, it sounds like you've been active in trying to light your parking lot, so I'm already encouraged by you trying to figure that out, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Keep going on that.
Oh, we will. I don't think you want a dark parking lot either.
No.
Um, yeah, I'm, can we call the question?
Yeah.
Yes.
So are we in agreement on those, those two condition? Or no, we don't need the second condition. Are we okay with just Class A? You, you aren't planning on using the, the off-premise drinking?
No, 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 off-premise drinking, no.
So we've just approved Class A with the understanding that she's not coming off-premise?
No packaging sales?
No.
Frank and I both have just kind of reviewed the, all the different classes.
No, no, no.
Nothing to go.
And, um, the ones with no off-premise are really all for restaurants, which this doesn't really, it's not really a restaurant use, so um, it's kind of a bit of an anomaly, cause I think some, this is more for a bar that might be able to sell packages to go, which I'm not sure if it was added during COVID, but a lot of people added that kind of language during COVID to allow that bars to sell to-go alcohol. Um, but I, you could add a condition certainly that there's no off-premise sales allowed.
Okay, so do we need to amend the motion to include the language that there will be no off-premise for their, for this license?
Sure, and, um, the light, if you wanted the lighting condition as well. Whatever, what, how, whichever you would.
I don't feel like the lighting is related to the liquor license, it seems more like a ComEd, uh.
It sounds like you've been trying to get it worked out and.
We've been trying for a while, yes.
So.
Are we allowed to issue a liquor license and then pull away provisions of it? Without, say, creating a new class? I mean, I don't know that we've ever done that, where we'll restrict, we'll, we'll issue a license but restrict the usage of it based on, you know, whatever item or add to it, you know, either way.
I've never seen it without creating a class.
Cause in each instance where there's been a unique situation, we've gone ahead and created a new class of license, we have one classes, so.
Yeah, the new restriction that we'll have with the noise ordinances and the special use is that if they violate the noise ordinance enough times, we can take away their music and that pretty much shuts down their ability to sell liquor if they can't have music and parties, so.
Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about is issuing a Class A license with an understanding here and even a written provision that prohibits sale of packaged goods. But a license allows for it, is what I'm saying, so legally, can we go ahead and issue a license that, that?
My expert says no, too.
I don't think so.
No, we need to. I mean, we don't have that on any of our other bars downtown that...
So, we can just...
Just approve it as it is.
Just approve it as it is, then?
Yeah.
All right, so then we can just call the question?
Yeah.
Easy enough?
Wait a minute, what are you talking about? Calling the question as to what?
That we are going to approve the ordinance, man, amending the number of Class A liquor licenses.
No, I understand what that means. I just don't understand how it fits in with what they're talking about.
Um, that's what you say when you...
I, I understand the procedure. What I'm saying is I don't understand how, the context of it. When you're, you're talking about calling the question right now, I understand where you're going with this, but what does that ultimately mean with regard to this license? You're, you're talking about allowing for, for packaged liquor to be sold? Because that's what a Class A license allows.
As all of our, the bars have.
As all bars do, even if they don't do it.
Consistent legal application to all laws, basically.
Tracy Mahoney?
Yes.
Tracy Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribber?
Nope.
Sard?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question? One quick question, please. Do you guys own or rent?
Own, oh, yeah. It's two separate entities technically, but, um, my father and I own the building, and then there's, my father wants the, owns the banquet operation, but I'm the general manager of it.
So, are we gonna, are we gonna attach a date to that for, um, the lighting purposes? A completion date to the issue to the license?
The license was passed without any conditions.
So, I guess to piggyback that, do I email pictures, or what do I, what's my next step for the lights? I mean, we want to get that fixed anyway, so...
Well, I, because, like I said, it's an anomaly, and ComEd doesn't usually put lights on that don't serve their function either, so I'm not really sure what function this serves. We'll reach out to our ComEd rep, but my recommendation is gonna be that they remove them.
Okay.
Um, and then you would add whatever lights you think would adequate for whatever your purposes are.
Thank you so much.
Can you make sure it's not...
Okay.
Whatever, whatever we require, would it be... Our requirements wouldn't be met by some of the, right, ways that they control.
Thank you.
And ComEd lights?
Well, if they want additional, because presumably, they've already got what's adequate, because whatever's in the right, it wouldn't have been considered as part of the overall lighting plan. And they've been burned out for years, so, right now, they're just sitting there.
Yeah, it takes us to item B. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution awarding a bid to Arrow Road Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the twenty-twenty-three street improvement project, and authorize a total expenditure of up to the budgeted amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Second.
Discussion?
Well, I have a thought, a question, Phil. Uh, there's a note that says that this is going to include some spot repairs elsewhere in the village, other than what's on the map. Is that correct?
For, um, pavement patching?
Yes.
And then also some curb and sidewalk repair.
Okay. We're gonna make sure that, um, in the flats, uh, where our border hits Carpentersville, I believe it's on, um, First Street, that we're gonna patch there, because it's real bad over there. And I know that we need to redo the entire road, but, I mean, we should at least patch, because it is, it's terrible there.
It is terrible.
It's embarrassing.
It is, yes. We'll take a look at that and see what we can do this year, yeah. For sure.
So, Phil, has any, I don't know if you call it study or analysis been done to see how much of the patching we can do in-house? We, along Howard Court, there was some done where between the curb and the actual pavement, it deteriorates. We go in there, we get it, we can either own or can rent a roller to do a lot of that length patching, if you will, between the curb and, and pavement, up to maybe, say, two, three feet. A lot of this is, a lot of the patchwork was, what I'm saying, is part of this budget. I'm wondering how much of it we might be able to claw back and do ourselves. You know, I answered it now, but I'm just wondering if you...
No, it was a very good question. We did some of the patching already this year in-house. We rented an asphalt kettle, which is a, it's a hopper that has a burner, and it heats up the asphalt that we get from the asphalt plant, and so we'll cut out the patches ourselves. We typically do the smaller ones in-house, and we'll leave the larger ones for a contractor who is more skilled, and they have the, the larger roller and the better equipment to pave a larger patch. So, we in-house are doing the smaller patches, and we rent rollers from local rental facilities.
Right. Yeah, I'm just kind of curious of the three seventy-five, or between that and the four seventy-one, you know, those amounts, it's a lot of money, of course, and I mean, I know it takes a lot to, to keep the streets going. I'm just wondering, how much of those figures would be border patch, if you will, if you want to call it that? So, I mean, it's just a thought.
It'll be a combination of, so some patching will be, some of the larger patches throughout the village, um, will be done under this program. And then, so we'll continue to patch in-house some of the smaller ones.
Well, and I saw in here that essentially it's, three seventy-five is what the bid came in for, for the original plan. And so going up to four seventy-one, we're even adding another street repair, and it's still coming in, in, under the budget, right?
Correct, yes.
Fantastic.
So, that map on the second page of my memo shows, the blue dots shows the streets that are under the proposed project, and then we're proposing to add Linden, which is the orange dots, uh, for this year's project. Still, yes, as you indicated, Trustee Brenner, coming into the, under budget. And that street, Linden, is contiguous to, as you see, a portion of the proposed projects, so it would be a desirable situation, I would think, for the contractor, Arrow Road, Arrow Road Construction.
Anything else? Anybody?
Nope.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribber?
Yep.
Sard?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item C, if we get our motion.
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing an engagement letter with Griffin Williams McMahon and Walsh L. L.
Second.
Chief, would you like to weigh in on this one, or?
Actually, I think that, uh, also Mr. Mann is here, if you'd, uh, if you'd like to speak with him. Just that, uh, this provides a dual purpose. One is, is that to, uh, formalize the, uh, informal temporary agreement that we have with Mr. McMahon to do our DUI prosecution after our, uh, our previous DUI prosecutor, uh, was elevated to become an associate judge. And then this will also, then he'll take on the role of, uh, kind of the prosecutorial side, or, uh, basically representing the police department of the village in a, uh, uh, matter before the Liquor Commission, since the, the village attorney would be the commission's attorney.
Gotcha. Okay, good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the chief or Mr. McMahon? Thank you, sir. Franco?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzey?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribber?
Yes.
Sard?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item D. Which is a discussion and direction in response to a proposal made by the village by Verizon Wireless to enter into a new lease agreement for the placement of cellular antenna equipment on village property. Erica, would you like to run us through this one?
Sure, so Verizon is basically asking to renegotiate the existing agreement. They call it a lease optimization program, which basically means they want to provide a longer tenure of a lease for lesser dollar amount per month, and it's creative. Staff is sort of neutral on, on this proposal, which is why we didn't provide a recommendation. Franco reached out to some areas, area communities who have been similarly approached, and some of them have not opted to proceed with entering into this agreement, and so far have not had any of the communications equipment removed. So, we, we can let the lease run its course, or we can opt to lock in that longer term in exchange for a lower monthly payment. Whichever the board prefers.
Uh, can I ask, what, um, you were saying, uh, you mentioned that no other municipality, they have pulled out, in other words, because a municipality agreed or did not allow the new agreement?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, so, um, how, how many years is the agreement?
I think it's two years.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-one.
Are they five-year agreements, or ten?
Five.
Five. We got two more years left on it. I would just, I mean, they need the equipment there, and we know that. I don't necessarily want to hold them, uh, their feet to the flame on this, but it's a contract, we signed it, I, they signed it. I don't see any reason why we would want to change it mid-screen. It's simply because it benefits them, you know, and certainly not to our advantage to allow it. Uh, so, you know, they want a longer term for less money. Well, yeah, I, I, you gotta give them full marks for creativity, but it, uh, it doesn't do much for us, so...
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only risk is if they terminate. We get three months, and then it's, they're gone. You know, there's, it's not zero risk.
Well...
But it's, you know...
One community has told me that they didn't respond or opted not to participate in their, um, program, and it's been almost fifteen months, and I haven't heard back from them.
Okay, so, by not zero risk, it's like point zero zero one risk.
I'm not sure, and we just received an email from AT&amp;T today asking the same. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay.
Well, it, it, it seems as though they're fishing, just to see who might, might...
Reduce your costs.
Yeah, uh, in the event that they were to say, you know what, East Dundee's not cooperating, we're gonna go ahead and pull these antenna, um, they would, of course, need to find some of the, some other municipality where they would locate them. Uh, for our part, it's not costing us anything to have these antenna on our water towers. Uh, it's a revenue stream for us. Certainly, uh, if we were to lose it, we'd have to adjust, but, um, I personally, I, I I would just suggest that we stay the course right now, situation at hand, and, uh, see what happens when the contract is up.
Can, can you explain what the difference it means between the term ends, and then it's twenty-twenty-five and two years, but it expires in thirty-five?
Yeah.
So, what's the difference in that? Is, is that when the, the rent escalator goes into effect, or?
So, I believe it is that the contract for the current price is until twenty-twenty-five, and then there's these renewable terms, and there's already a built-in price set for those renewable terms, and then in twenty-thirty-five is when it would be...
The option's up.
The option is up.
So, we're saying that they're actually locked in now until twenty-thirty-five?
No, I would say at twenty-twenty-five, they would have the option to renegotiate the contract with us if they wanted to not exercise...
Or sever. Without, without, like, there must be some sort of backup built into these, this contract, this agreement. Are we saying that at the end of the term, in twenty-twenty-five, they can cancel the deal without penalty?
Correct.
So, what other options do they have for moving it to another tower? In our town, there's not a lot.
Town?
It would be within our town.
I mean, and Sleeping Hollow has voted against letting these towers go up in their town. I feel like it's gonna be a big investment for them to tear all these down and put them back up on another tower. And I kind of agree with Jeff, this is a low-ball offer, they're just fishing for free money.
Let's, do we know what the long, oh, I'm sorry.
But, yeah, what?
I was just gonna say, do we know what the long-term technology is for the towers?
I was reading online, just researching, it's, this coming up in other towns, and it does seem like this is a standard tactic that they fish for, but if you have them on your tower, uh, they typically don't want to tear them all down and put them back up on another tower. But it is, uh, fished out to a third party who just attempts to lower leases.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have the equipment already, it seemed like generally the sites were saying, uh, don't go with whatever low-ball offer they send you right away. That you have more leverage because you have the equipment. They don't want to tear it all down and put it back up somewhere else. And there's other chances to negotiate. Typically, they start low.
Another thought, too, is that if they're gonna take these down, because they don't like the fact that East Dundee, or any other town for that matter, won't sign a new agreement, taking them down and finding another town is going to say, when they go to that other town, they're gonna say, we want to put our antenna on your guys' tower. Those other communities are gonna know what they earned in the past by allowing that. They're gonna want at least that much. Verizon, AT&amp;T, they all know that, so they're not gonna move. I mean, it's not likely. I mean, they, they know what the expense is going into it, so... I would say we just stick with what we've got for the next two years, and then when they come back in with another arrangement, we can adjust it then.
I mean, the one thing I couldn't find out is what is the price other towns are paying, or getting paid. Uh, it does say the national average is like twelve hundred a month, so it seems high, but the Chicagoland area might be all pretty on par with what we're getting.
Right.
If you know people in other towns to compare to, it might be interesting to see if we're getting paid way more than anyone, or way less, or the same. I compared it with Geneva, because that's what I had, uh, handy from, when I used to work there, and that was my counter offer to them, was to match what they were doing, and they didn't want to do that.
Which isn't that much more. A hundred and twenty bucks a month. So... Okay, that's awesome.
All righty, that'll take us to, or is there any other questions on this? No? Okay, we'll go to reports. Andy, what you got?
Uh, I was gonna do an Arts Council update about the mural, but why? Pete said it very well, so, uh, but there is chalk art that was, um, done last night by Scott's daughter, Mabson, and she did some beautiful fish and, uh, some other stuff for Motor Monday, so go watch Motor Monday and see it. Uh, that's all we got.
Trish?
Just a lot of mural.
Rich?
No report.
Scott?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, second Andy's thought, uh, and thank Tricia, brought birth the idea of the Arts Council. I think that it's paid enormous dividends already. Uh, it's just, it's been a great addition to the town, so, thank you.
Kathleen?
Agreed. Um, well done, and just the fact that the Arts Council has really made the impression that we are an easy village to work with is, is in itself an awesome thing. I had a question for Chief, um, again, on the subject of noise nuisance. So, if a resident has, it's, it's after midnight, the next-door neighbor is playing music really loud, they're by themselves, they don't feel comfortable going over next door to ask them to turn it down, even, you know, um, if their spouse or somebody else was with them to go, um, what number do they call?
Nine-one-one.
Thank you. Thank you. We've been having a little bit of a online debate. So, even though that is not protective in nature, it's still, that's the way that you contact the police after hours.
They give a response to your house.
Thank you.
I feel like we need, like, messaging around this, because I'm never going, like, intuitively, you don't call nine-one-one if it's not an actual emergency, so...
I've been this, I've had to go through this everywhere. Because Chicago does such a great job that their communications are trying to get people not to call nine-one-one, so...
Right, right.
Because they have a three-one-one system.
Right. So, that's part of it. Uh, the main reason is, too, is because of the location information that when you call nine-one-one,
the dispatcher gets where you're calling from, if it's a cellular or a house phone, and locates you in case they lose you or something happens, or there's more to it, or something like that, or if they call the regular phone number, it's just like calling into the dispatch center.
Okay.
But it's not tracked the same way.
Okay.
In the phone system.
So I just wanna make sure that policy was still the same from previous chiefs, that I've gotten the same directive from, so even. Sorry?
Testing.
Yeah, no, no, I want, I want, I want this person, I've been talking to, to see this video and I will tell them the timestamp to go take a look. And so anytime that we need a police response to something, you call nine one one. There is no non-emergency number or the non-emergency number, my understanding is for police administrative purposes?
Well, our, our number is, you know, where to leave a message for an employee or some of your business hours. The non-emergency number for quiet count will get you into the room, but it's not prioritized or anything, and the data doesn't come in like it does at night for none anymore.
And speaking of more messaging, so what, if somebody's calling nine one one and they know they need a police response, but it's not a emergency, what is the kind of script that you would recommend for a caller so that when they're talking to the dispatcher, they can kind of feel comfortable with the, the protocols that are set up?
The telecommunicator does have actually a script, basically a protocol of what questions to ask depending on the call type and the severity of the call and, you know, there's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of who, what, where, when and how, but they'll be asking those questions in a certain format as they're typing it on the screen to populate the call type and so forth, and any remarks that the complainant may have.
Right.
And it is, you know, perfectly fine if somebody wants to tell us about something or feels is concerned about their neighbor, but doesn't necessarily want the officer to come to their home because maybe they are concerned about not being identified as the complainant. Although at that point, for the most part, all the officers gonna be able to do is give a warning to the person to turn it down.
If they observe the same behavior?
Right.
Yeah.
If, if the person doesn't wanna sign, because we can't be disturbed, so we wouldn't normally sign a complaint if it was somebody in a neighborhood like that unless it fell under our noise ordinance and medical principles and that, that matter. But the actual disturbing piece part of the noise ordinance, you have to have a complaint for that to happen.
Okay, sounds good. So the dispatcher or the person taking in the call already has a protocol that they follow in the questions that they ask, whatever caller, to determine their urgency?
Worked correct.
Okay.
Based on the call.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Sarah?
Couple things, first of all, we have a new box outside of Village Hall for agendas for those folks in our community who do not have easy access to internet and would like access to our meeting agendas and the other forms of communication we may choose to throw out there, things like that. Second, just following up on previous meetings, Jeff, thank you, I saw your email right before this, I didn't have a chance to really read through it. We have, we're filling some of our committee members in different commissions and I wanna figure out a way in all of our committees and all of our commissions to make sure everybody understands how important their role is in our government because their roles are very important in our government. So, I don't know the best way to go about this. I do think that a good chunk of people do understand their responsibilities and their importance and what, what they're doing and how it matters and how it fits into the board and all of that other stuff, but I don't think everybody does and everybody should. So I'd really like to look at somehow getting that messaging out to anybody who's participating in our village government. And also, we've had many commissions and committees have had attendance issues. And I don't wanna look backwards, but going forward, again, these are vital commissioners. These are vital people to our village government, so is there a way to just say, hey, if you miss four months in a row, we accept your resignation? You know, quiet quitting is a real thing now and I don't want that, you know, we've missed quorum in some of the commissions and that's a problem, so is there anything that we can do in our code to just sort of say, look, if you've missed a quarter or a third of the meetings for the year in a row, in a row, right? Either we essentially accept your resignation or we, or you have to at least explain why you're not coming, because I do understand health issues crop up, right? Emergencies crop up, big things crop up, but we need, we need people or we miss quorum. And if we miss quorum too many times, then nothing gets done in this village. You know, it's, we're missing quorum in some of these and I just want to resolve that going forward where it's, you know, something. Something, if we, if we have the ability to do that. To just encourage people to attend as many meetings as they can in the year and know that they're important and it's important that they attend.
That actually is, you know, part of the whole, I don't know if you'd call it a vetting process, but, you know, when you try and find somebody to a point, you know, I've always tried to, to impress upon anybody who wants to get involved that, hey, it's important, you need to, you need to do the homework, you need to, you know, attend the meetings and so as far as putting something like that into code, I don't know, you know, if that would, it sounds like it's more of a policy issue than an actual ordinance, but we can talk about it certainly.
I know there, our municipalities, I believe Evanston, for example, has codified that if you miss a certain number of meetings, it's an automatic resignation, so it is possible. And that's, it could be a policy, it could be a code. You could certainly direct staff to look into it and to bring something back to the next, next meeting.
I would like that, I would like to have something just to, you know, if it's, if it's policy, if it's code, I just want it somewhere so that we can almost hand people a sheet of paper that says, look at how important people are. Here are the rules that we want you to follow, so.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, great. Yeah, the email that Sarah mentioned was one I sent out with a couple of candidates for the Arts Council and the Police Commission. Still waiting on one other possible candidate, so when I get a yay or nay on that, I'll send that one out. But there's actually a few waiting in the wings, so I wanna take it in order and see, you know, what, I mean, if I ask somebody first, I'd rather find out yes or no rather than moving on to someone else, you know, that eliminates a snag, so. You know, one of the other things I think would be of, of help to some of the questions that Sarah brought up was the Illinois Municipal League every year has conferences in Chicago in September. They are allowable for any of our, any of our staff, any of our committee members, board, that sort of thing. They have individual seminars, tutorials, so forth, or you can go to a whole two-day conference if you'd like, but there's a lot of information that's, that's gone, that's imparted, that's really, really helpful, both on, on roles, expectations, areas of improvement, things like that, so would certainly be worthwhile for all of us to take a look at that and we'll get some more information as the dates are all around.
Okay, Jeff, there, registration's already open and it's Thursday through Saturday.
Okay, there you go.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth-ish, whatever that, those are the rough dates for the Thursday through Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
In September.
Yeah, we get emails from Brad Cole, actually, and you probably have seen him, and he sends out a lot of information for us through the IML, so that information's gonna continue to come up as the dates near, so I would encourage everyone to take a look and see what you might, you know, have an interest in sitting in on, so. The only other thing was just to, again, the entire process surrounding the mural, the artist, Madeline, her mother, Deanna was, she was wonderful. Pete's involvement, as I say, was really critical to how it turned out. He's, on his own dime, moved the air conditioners, that was a big one. The landscaping that blocked, obviously, the, the wall, breaking up the one window, I mean, that was, well, I tell you, that was cooperation over and above. And then, of course, landscaping that he's talking about doing, so it's wonderful that he's been as involved as he has, so. Everybody who's had a hand in it, I wanna thank, so. That's all I have, so we'll start with staff. Chris, anything?
The apartment has been issued over there for River Valley Mall Shopping Center for the parking lot, the roof, the side.
Okay.
So that works will be starting in the next week or month.
Okay.
To get that thing updated.
Okay, is there any, just as you bring that one up, as far as roof, is there any condition issues between the north end that is owned by Amin Toulouse as opposed to the south two-thirds that's owned by Bobby? As far as, I mean, are there any questions, like, you know, there's gonna be a line at which the property ownership begins and the other one ends? But I mean, is there any issues with the north half though, when we're doing the whole roof? Could we get a better deal?
Even did his roof a few years ago.
He did, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right, so. Just wondering if there's, you know, some communication going on, if, if it's needed, so. Is that all?
That's it.
Got it, chief? Okay, Phil? Joe? Caitlin, anything?
No report. No report?
No report. Outstanding, well, I don't believe we have an executive session, is that the case? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank God for coming. See you in two weeks.
No executive.
No executive session, that's on the next one.